Thoughts come after us. Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the April twenty first meeting of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Dempsey will lead us in the pledge.
I bow with this, please. My dear Lord, we want to thank you for all of this, whether we've been having or wanting to thank you. Right, you look over at first responders that serve us, helping to keep us safe. We ask that you give us time to come out tonight as safe at home from this meeting, all these things.
Pleasure, agents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be seated. If I could remind you to silence your cell phones. And gentlemen, I appreciate you removing your covers before the meeting started. We do have four or five commissioners present tonight. Commissioner Caraway is out of town. He's had a death in the family, so if you would, keep him in your thoughts and prayers and his family as well. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to review the minutes from our March thirty first meeting. If there are no amendments or additions, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Go here, second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion approved. The minutes as submitted passes four zero. Gentlemen, you've also had an opportunity to review our fairly short agenda tonight. I think we got twenty eight items to deal with tonight. So if there are no additions or amendments to the agenda, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Go here, second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion approved. The agenda is submitted, passes four zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action at six P M. on May third, twenty twenty two, in these same chambers. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Carol Harden, and she'll provide you with a request to speak for them. We're less formal in these chambers. How many folks have been to a Planning Commission meeting before? Okay, so a lot of you haven't. A number of the items that we'll deal with tonight will not be a public hearing, meaning we won't have public input, so it's very administrative in order or in the process. When we get to our public hearings section at the very end of the meeting and we get to our public hearings for rezoning and variances, I'll open the floor. I'll ask for the person that has submitted the application to come up first to give us any additional information that they would like us to consider over and above what staff's given us. Then I'll open the floor for anybody else that would like to add comment either on one of the agenda items or in the public comments section. If you have another item that you'd like to communicate some information to be on the record for not just us, but for the Commissioners as well, because they do review these meetings. If you'd raise your hand, we'll call you up to the to the to the desk. And if you could take three to five minutes to give us that information, I appreciate it. If you're here on behalf of a development or a subdivision, if you have a person that's going to speak for the group, I'd ask that they come first. Then we'll open the floor up for other folks. If you get repetitive, we don't need to hear about traffic ten times. So once or twice is good enough. We get it. We get traffic every meeting, as a matter of fact, and rightly so. That's what we're here for. We take more time to vet these items than the Commissioners do in their meetings. They depend on us to do homework and provide them with what we find. So again, we'll be glad to hear whatever input you've got. With that being said, we'll move right into our agenda tonight. We have nothing on the debate agenda. Under unfinished business, we do have new business. Ms. Hall, I believe we have three massage operators licenses?
The first one is Ahesma Healing and Wellness LLC. They applied for a massage operator's license using Betty Dublin Loop as their administrative office. This one's a little different than any one we've had before. She's actually not performing massage. She's performing Reiki services, but our code specifically requires that someone performing Reiki have a massage operator's license. We'll consult with our county attorney, find with the moving forward with the approval of the license.
Okay, and Reiki being?
Reiki is a transfer of energy. It's not necessarily physically touching someone. The applicant is here if we provide any addition. Not a practice I've ever-
I know Al's interested. We'll let him set that up on his own time. Okay, gentlemen, do you have any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for the Healing and Wellness LLC practitioner Sally Limbung Doth. Limbung Doth? Libbung Doth, okay.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Hall?
Our next one is Daniel Goggins. His business has Abide Holistic Wellness Studio. He is a massage therapist at thirty six eighty five Riverwatch Parkway, Suite one oh five, and he'll also be providing mobile massage services.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions? I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve massage operator's license for Daniel Goggins, Abide Holistic Wellness Studio.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Hall, number three.
Finally, as for Don McCall doing the best peaceful dawn, applied for a massage operator's license at thirty six eighty five Riverwatch Parkway, Suite one oh five. All the requirements and approval.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, again, we'll need a motion to approve, disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Don McCall, Peaceful Dawn.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's good to see you again. Mr. Butler, we have three items presented as information only. All three are temporary use permits. One is on Washington Road, the other South Bel Air, the other Ronald Reagan. Would you like to take all three of those successively?
I mean, I'll just present them all at once. We can go through it pretty quick.
Okay.
The first one again, four two two three Washington Road, Timber construction office and containers. This is over at in front of the Target. This location of the property, currently zone C two, shows the plan of how they're gonna put a few containers out in the parking lot. And this is approved back on March thirtieth. Next one is a timber construction office at two two nine South Bel Air Road. This is location down South Bel Air Road at Colonial Road intersection. Currently zone P one, again, shows a plan with the construction trailer on it. That was approved in April seventh. And we have a fifty Ronald Reagan Drive just over the hill over here. This is also a construction trailer for the apartment complex in currently zone planned development. It was off trailer and temple, approved on April eleventh.
All right, sir, would you like to go and continue to the fourth that we need to vote on tonight?
This is two seven five four Summit Ridge Road. It's a current zone R A. They're looking to have to maintain the manufactured home during construction of new residence. This location of the property getting off Summit Ridge Road, everything around it is owned residential agricultural. This is plan of the property there. This is the existing mobile home they're gonna keep, and then they'll have their future home that will be under construction, then they'll move it off the double Y off of the property once future home is complete. So I recommend approval of their request.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, if there are none, I need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization. Seven fifty four.
Do your second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, we've got two conceptual plans to consider. The first for Four Oaks Phase Three.
Yes, sir. This is a conceptual plan for twenty one lots on thirteen point four acres off Hereford Farm Road. This is the location of the property at the end of Bronco Pass. And the existing site conditions, you can see there's quite a bit of slope to the property, particularly at the western end of the site. And the conceptual plan, now, we did see a previous conceptual plan for this property back in February in conjunction with a rezon- or a variance request for the buffers. Both the variance and the conceptual plan were disapproved by Planning Commission at that time. However, the variance was subsequently approved by the Board of Commissioners, and they are now resubmitting the conceptual plan for approval in line with the conditions of that variance. So we do have the twenty one lots. We have a twenty five foot buffer on the south side of the property here. This portion where the road is is basically a zero foot buffer due to the road running through there. The remainder of the property has the required fifty foot buffer around it. There is a sewer line right through here, and that sewer line and easement will impact that portion of the buffer. The lots are compliant with R two zoning, which means they are a minimum of ten thousand square feet. They're accessed via the road extension of Bronco Pass. That is a public road and will extend to the cul-de-sac there. That is going to exceed seven hundred feet in length, so that does require specific approval from Planning Commission. But given the the shape of the property and the topography and the surrounding development, it is the most viable way to develop the site. And staff is recommending approval of the concept plan.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Four Oaks Phase Three located off Farm Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four zero. Ms. Montgomery, Four Oaks Phase Four.
Yes, sir. So this is the concept plan for Four Oaks Phase Four, also off Hereford Farm Road. A portion of this property that we're going to see is R C O, which has the residential cluster overlay on it. The rest of it is R two, as is the site we just looked at. So this property is on the north side of the existing phases of Four Oaks. It is also quite steeply sloped. There's quite a lot of topography in this area. And this is the conceptual plan. It is these four lots up here that they're acquiring from the property that's currently under development for Southwind Village. That parcel has R C O zoning applied to it, so those four lots would meet the R C O requirements. The remainder of the lots are R two, which means ten thousand square foot minimum lot size. Again, the Board of Commissioners approved the variance for the buffers on this property in February. So we have the twenty five foot buffer along the side property line with a fence requirement, and that is shown on the concept plan. This section is thirty eight single-family lots. We have two public roads, one the connection between Southwind Village and the existing phases of Four Oaks, and then the one additional cul-de-sac. And staff is recommending approval of the concept plan.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, I'll need a motion. This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Four Oaks Phase Four located off Hereford Farm Road.
Do your second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four zero. Mr. Butler, we have two architectural reviews tonight, one for Pinnacle Bank in the Gateway.
That's correct. It's a four twenty Lewiston Road. It's a compliance of the rezoning condition from twenty twenty. I recommend approval of the request. Shows the location of the property, getting off Lewiston Road. Currently zone C C, Community Commercial. Review of the property looks a little bit different at the moment. And the site plan, the Popeyes are already being constructed. You can have you some chicken if you like today. The Pinnacle Bank is about to be under construction weeks in all likelihood. Again, they do have a shared driveway up here. And again, some of the examples of the building that will be built there, one of the conditions that require brick and stone, they met that requirement with the elevation we'll see here next, and shows the elevations here. Also a close-up of that again, showing the brick and also the stone on the bottom part of the elevation. I think that's our recommends approval.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
I make a motion to approve the architectural review for the Pinnacle Bank located at four two zero Lewiston Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four zero. I think that's our first bank in the Gateway.
I believe so.
So are we gonna see a rush?
Oh, you know, Rome banks, it's always fun, right?
Yeah. All right, we got a second building for stories on Furious Ferry.
That's correct. It's again a compliance with the rezoning condition. When it was rezoned, they had a requirement that it basically come out for you guys, because we didn't have any elevations at that time. And basically has to meet the our look-alike, the building at the front. And we're gonna recommend approval on this one as well. This location of the property, we're dealing with the building back here. And again, the current zoning is S one special, and a review of the property. And the site plan again, dealing with phase two, as noted there. It shows elevations with some stucco and brick matching the front of the building here. And with the brick, well, the E V is on the top as well. And so I recommend approval.
Gentlemen, any questions? This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the architectural review, four E's located at eleven oh six Furious Ferry Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four zero. Ms. Montgomery, we've got a final plat for Crawford Creek South Ten.
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for Section Ten of Crawford Creek off William Smith Boulevard. This is the location of the property, and you can see it is in planned unit development as part of Crawford Creek. And this section includes fifty two residential lots with a minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet and an average lot size of ten thousand two hundred and ninety nine square feet. The minimum required setbacks are fifteen feet from the right-of-way and ten feet from the side and rear property lines per the zoning and approved conditions. However, front setbacks are generally eighteen feet from the right-of-way with some lots having that increase to twenty one feet depending on utility placement. Sidewalks and street trees are to be provided on both sides of the road, and one point nine four acres of open space is included in this section. And this is the existing site. You can see construction is not complete at this time, and staff is recommending approval of the final plat.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Crawford Creek Ten located off William Smith Boulevard.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four zero. Ms. Montgomery, final plat for Jones Mill Phase Three.
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for Phase Three of Jones Mill off Furious Ferry Road. This is the location of the property at the back of Jones Mill, currently zoned R two, single-family residential. And this section includes thirty single-family lots with a minimum lot size of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet and an average lot size of seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy square feet. Being R two, these lots have minimum setbacks of fifty five feet from the center line of the road and ten feet from the side and rear property lines. Thirteen point eight six acres of open space is included in this section. And this is the existing site, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Jones Mill located off Furious Ferry Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four zero. Okay, Ms. Montgomery, our last final plat for Whispering Pines, four B and five B.
Yes, sir. This is the final plat for Sections four B and five B of Whispering Pines located off William Few Parkway. This is the location of the property at the back of Whispering Pines, currently zoned planned unit development. And this includes seventy one single-family lots with a minimum lot size of seven thousand one hundred and fifty square feet and an average lot size of nine thousand one hundred square feet in Section four B and eight thousand four hundred and eight square feet in Section five B. The lots have minimum setbacks of twenty five feet from the right-of-way, seven and a half feet from the side property lines, and ten feet from the rear property lines in accordance with the PUD. Sidewalks and street trees are to be provided in this development, and ten point eight acres of open space is included in this section. This is the existing site, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions? This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Whispering Pines, four B and four, five B located off William Few Parkway.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four zero. Mr. Butler, we've got an information-only minor waiver, file M W two two zero four zero one.
That would do. It's at two thousand one Grace Avenue. There's a reduction in the front setback from Furious Ferry Road. Shows a little of the zone of the property getting zoned R two. And also the plan itself, the reduction was along, or Evans Lock, excuse me, I always get those two confused. Agreed? And you've got a forty nine foot M B L now, AKA ninety nine feet from the center line. It was a hundred and ten. They reduced it by eleven feet. And that was approved back on March thirty first.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move directly into our public hearing portion of the meeting tonight. Ms. Montgomery, we have a conditional use and a variance that go together. Would you like to take those separately?
Yes.
Okay, so the first is the conditional use for file R Z two two zero four zero one.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a conditional use for a car wash at forty one eighty six Crosstown Court. This is the location of the property on the south side of Crosstown Court, off Columbia Industrial Boulevard, and currently zoned M two general industrial. The surrounding properties to the north and the west are also M two, while to the southeast you have the existing R two single-family residential subdivision. This is the aerial of the site with the existing building and the existing building from the street view. So the applicant is requesting a conditional use for a car wash on this property. According to the applicant, his business is primordial ceramic coating of vehicles, which does require rinsing of the vehicles prior to application. The county definition for a car wash includes any mechanical or hand-operated equipment used for cleaning, washing, polishing, or waxing. So the applicant's use does fall under this definition. This does require the conditional use. The applicant is intending for the operations to be inside of this building where they can kind of control the environment for the coating, which is quite different from other kind of full-service, public-oriented kind of car washes. The proposed use of rinsing the vehicles inside the building is unlikely to cause negative impacts to the adjacent property. They have proposed improvements to the property, including landscaping, signage, and lighting. There is also the issue of the buffer at the back of the property here against the residences. That is not currently up to code, so we do have a condition proposed to require them to kind of address that buffer and add any plantings that are needed and any screening to the fence to make that compliant. This property is located in the Evans Town Center Mixed Use Activity Center on the future development map. This area allows for a variety of uses, including retail, restaurants, offices, and light industrial uses at the periphery or in existing industrial zoning. The current proposed use is on an existing industrial property and is an industrial use under the county code. Since the property is already industrial, this use meets the intent of the activity center. And staff is recommending approval with the conditions that, again, the applicant coordinate with the planning department and the county landscape architect to ensure the required buffer is installed, and that any lighting added to the site be shielded and or directed away from residential properties. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to add to, like to add to the staff's report? Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file R Z twenty two dash oh four dash oh one, conditional use for car wash at forty one eighty six Crosstown Court.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Prove passes four zero. Ms. Montgomery, companion variance file V A two two zero four zero three.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to Section ninety dash one forty seven use provisions in regards to the car wash at forty one eighty six Crosstown Court. So again, we're looking at the same property on the south side of Crosstown Court that is currently zoned M two. I'm going to stop on this slide for a moment. The provisions for a car wash include a provision requiring that at least fifty feet between a ground floor residential use and the car wash, and that is measured between property lines. So since this property abuts residential zoning, they obviously cannot meet fifty foot separation between the property lines and therefore have applied for the the variance to allow the car wash to operate on this property. And this is the aerial of the site and the existing building. As we talked about with the conditional use, all of the operations are intended to be inside this building, and we also have the conditions on the conditional use to increase that buffer to the required forty feet. That does provide a minimum of forty feet of separation between the residential lots and any activity on this property, which is close to the fifty feet required in the the use provisions. So that does provide some additional support for waiving the the separation requirement. The staff is recommending approval of this variance request.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, we know the applicant's here. Is there anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there one here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file V A twenty two dash oh four dash oh three variance to allow a car wash on property within fifty feet of residential property at forty one eighty six Crosstown Court.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries four zero. Mr. Butler, we have two rezonings that are adjacent to one another. The first is file R Z two two zero four zero two.
Thank you. This is a request at six twenty nine Furious Ferry Road, rezoned from R two to P one for opposed hair salon. This location of the property on the east side of Furious Ferry Road. And again, currently zoned R two. We'll be seeing the property here as well here in a moment. And again, most things around, you have R two to the back with Westlake, and you have Cross Street. S one for sure, C one and P one, again, kind of a varied amount of zonings in the area. This is aerial view of the property, also the existing site, and the plat, very old plat, by the way. That's nineteen twenty nine. And the concept sketch, what we're seeing, both of them kind of combined together. These two applicants work together to to design an overall development that works quite well together. Again, so shows the proposed building, you know, four thousand square foot, two-story hair salon, associated parking, detention, required buffers against residential properties. Again, we're not tying this to their development against this concept, showing how it may be developed. But again, does show very clearly it can work. In the full sketch, showing both properties together, this is a G dot road. They have looked at it, but again, as with most things with G dot, they haven't necessarily set in stone. You can do it this way, but again, this should work with the shared drive of the ride-in, ride-out. Again, meeting a code there. And again, you have the design concept. Again, we're not gonna necessarily tie them to this. This is within the corridor protection overlay district, which, again, you can look down the street from this at the Center of Dermatology. That whole development is also within C PUD. Again, very similar idea with the architecture here. Again, this is a really good way to look at, a really good path that they're taking in this situation. In terms of future development, this is along, within the professional corridor, which doesn't but the neighborhood's character area. Again, like I said, the professional corridor means a P one rezoning makes a lot of sense here. Again, not asking for any variances, not asking for anything that's gonna impact residential properties. But we do have a condition with that, mostly as a more of a protection to make sure that there's no sort of issues of lighting and things. I do have one from the Health Department requires sanctions that county sewer is required. Again, that's just there to be very clear on that. You get a phonometric plan, which only raises zero foot counts of the property lines, residential zone properties. We'll provide prior to approval of the site plan, and staff recommends approval of those two conditions.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? I've got one. Could we go back to the plat?
Discern anything.
Not, I mean, not the plat, but to the diagram that shows the detention pond. Are we going to do like we did at Savannah River Dermatology and ask them to front, put plants along the front so it can be some additional shielding for the neighbors behind?
It's already required. That's the thing, is that when that was done, that was before the current code.
Right.
The current code definitely barred some from that experience.
Okay.
So they'll have to, they'll just screen that pond anyway.
Okay, got it.
Already there.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Is there anything you all would like to come forward and add? All right. All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
I make a motion to approve with conditions file R Z two two four zero two, R two to P one.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four zero. Mr. Butler, file R Z two two zero four zero three.
Thank you. This is a request right, right, right north of the other property just looked at, six thirty three Furious Ferry, again, going from R two to P one, this time for a proposed attorney's office. This location of the property on the east side of Furious Ferry, and zoning again, you know, based on the same thing. You got Westlake to the to the rear, you have C one across street, S one, R two, S one around it, again, varied amount of zonings in the area. The aerial view of the property, again, some of the previous one undeveloped, also the existing site. And the plat of the property, this is a little more, a little more new. On the concept sketch, again, shows a two-story building with associated parking and also detention at the back of the property, again, meeting all requirements for buffers and, and also setbacks. And again, showing the full sketch, showing how the two properties work together. And again, showing the full sketch, showing how the two properties work together. And the building concept was a little bit further along than the previous one. Again, this is a very preliminary, but again, they're both going in really good directions. Again, from before, we're within professional corridor. Again, just like I said, P1 is about perfect here. Again, no requests for any variances with it. Again, we do have a condition. Keeping is very similar with a photometric plan is required and also occasion of county sewer is required. And again, staff recommends approval with conditions of the request.
Gentlemen, any questions? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything you all would like to come forward and add?
Not coordinated, but they're.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Since the applicant seemed to be afraid to come up, can't decide. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 220403, zoning from R2 to P1.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four zero. Ms. Montgomery, we've got file RZ 220404.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential for the property at 576 Gibbs Road. The property is located on the west side of Gibbs Road and is currently zoned R1 Single Family Residential. You can see all of the properties immediately around it are zoned R2. So this guy is kind of the lone survivor from previous rezoning requests. This is the aerial of the site. It does have an existing house on it. The rezoning request has come about because the applicant is looking to add a pool in the backyard. And with R1, the rear setback, which would be along this property line, is 25 feet. For R2, that would be 10 feet, so it would give him an additional 15 feet of buildable space to add that pool in the backyard. While this could be handled through a variance, also with everyone around him being R2 and with him meeting the requirements for that district, he is connected to county water and sewer. He does meet the minimum lot size. It makes more sense to go ahead and rezone him to be the same as his neighbors, basically. This is the existing site with the existing house. And this property is in the neighborhood's character area, which is intended primarily for a single-family residential development. So this property is very much in keeping with that under both zoning districts. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Is there anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 22-04-04 rezoning from R1 to R2 at 576 Gibbs.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve passes four zero. Ms. Montgomery, we have a rezoning and a related variance on Columbia Road. The first is file RZ 220405.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning from R2 Single Family Residential to P1 Professional for a Hair Salon. This is the location of the property on the north side of Columbia Road. Currently zoned R2, as is the surrounding property to the north and west. To the east, you have a couple of properties that are zoned R3, a single-family residential and PDD as well. And across the street, you have the Sarah Creek pud here, which has some offices on the front of it, as well as some other professional and S1 zonings. This is the aerial of the site showing the existing house. And the existing site photo, again, that is the existing structure on the property. The proposal is to reuse this building for a hair salon. This is the plat of the property. And the as-built showing the existing building and driveway. You'll also notice the fence here in the right-of-way for Columbia Road. We are addressing that with a condition. And this is the concept plan showing adding the parking and detention to the site, as well as the landscape strip is required. There is, as mentioned, a variance to follow regarding the buffer widths, but we'll address that in a moment. In terms of the future development map, this property is located on the Columbia Road Professional Corridor. This is the first application since that update in 2010, 2021 that made this a professional corridor. And the intent of this corridor is to enhance the function of it, facilitate vehicular traffic flow, and also to kind of facilitate this transition from office, from residential to professional office use without encroaching on adjacent neighborhoods. Obviously, this property is not part of an existing neighborhood. And professional zoning is a fit for that corridor. And staff is recommending approval with the condition that that fence that was shown within the Columbia Road right-of-way be removed prior to a business operating on the property.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? Is the applicant here? Is there anything you'd like to add to the presentation? Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to postpone or to deny.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 22-04-05 rezoning from R2 to P1 at 4351 Columbia Road.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, companion variance file VA 220402.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to section 90-139 buffers and screening at the same property at 4351 Columbia Road. Again, this is the location of the property on the north side of Columbia Road. Currently zoned R2, although it is requested to be zoned to P1, and the variance request is related to that rezoning request. And this is the aerial of the property and the existing site and the plat. As-built. So currently, the concept plan that was submitted that we just looked at with the rezoning does show a 10-foot buffer around the property of 4P1 property against single-family residential. A 20-foot structural buffer is the normal requirement, so the 10-foot does represent a reduction of that. To support this, there is, was an alternate site plan submitted that showed the 20-foot buffer and how that would impact the site. It does kind of take out the storm guard pond that they were proposing in this location, and it does reduce the amount of parking they're able to provide on the property to meet the 20-foot buffer requirement. So the proposal, as far as the staff recommendation, we understand the need for the width at the front of the property here to accommodate that pond, to accommodate the parking. However, there's not really a good argument to reduce this buffer at the back. That doesn't impact any of those things. There is an existing building here that is intended to be removed anyway. So the staff recommendation is that the side property line buffers be reduced, but not the rear property line. So staff is recommending approval with the conditions that the reduction to 10 feet for the structural buffers apply only to those side property lines and that that accessory building in the northwest corner be removed and the buffer replanted.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, ma'am, do you have anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file VA 22-04-02 variance to reduce the buffers at 4351 Columbia Road.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Mr. Butler, we have a similar situation. We've got a rezoning with a companion variance file RZ 220406.
Thank you. This is a request for a rezoning from R4 to S1 for an existing cemetery on a 0.47 acre portion of property off Winfield Road. This is the location of the property on the east side of Winfield Road, just down from the intersection of Winfield Hills Road and Winfield Road. And the current zoning, everything around there is R4. You have some C1 down at the intersection of Missoula and Winfield. Aerial view of the site. Existing site. Also the plat, again, showing the cemetery. On the next one, we'll see the actual area that's being rezoned to S1. With the 50-foot buffer, we'll be addressing the 50-foot buffer on one side of that for the next request. As a future development, this is the late neighborhoods. This is a cemetery, it's not explicitly said you can have it there, but again, it is a park, park use. And it's existing, so no issues there. It makes the intent of future development map. That recommends approval of the request.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to add to the staff presentation? Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file RZ 220406, zoning from R4 to S1 for 47 acre tax map. 002 parcel 02F located off Winfield.
Do it here a second.
Hold on a second. Did you say a condition?
No condition.
No condition. Unless you want to add one, you make up one if you want to.
Those numbers missed. I'm in that motion, no condition.
All right, does the second still hold?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve with the amendment to your motion carries four zero. Mr. Butler, file VA 220404.
This is a request for a variance section 90-147 F2B use provisions, waiver requirement for graves to be setback a minimum of 50 feet from any property line for 0.47 acre portion of property located off Winfield Road. This is the property, again, we've already seen it before. And the zoning, currently zoned R4. Aerial view of the property. Existing site. Plat of the property and the cemetery. So this is kind of going into the property here. You can see that there are existing graves right against property lines of the north. Not right against, probably, I think they're 20 feet or so away. But again, they're existing. We're not going to make you move some graves just for a buffer. It is being provided on the other sides of the property, so we're meeting that condition as fully as they can. That recommends approval of the request.
Gentlemen, any questions? The buffer would normally be 50 feet.
Yeah, and that's more for if you're doing like a new cemetery, you kind of lay it out 50 feet around it. Existing ones, you've got to kind of go with what's available.
Thank you, sir. So this is a public hearing. Is there anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with no conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file VA 220404, variance to reduce the buffer for cemetery on a portion of tax map. Parcel 022F located off.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four zero. Ms. Montgomery, we've got file VA 220401 variance to sections 90-52 for ancillary dwellings and 90-53 for a list of lot and structure requirements.
Yes, sir. This is, as you noted, a variance to two sections at 4221 Green Ivy Lane. This is the location of the property in Spring Lakes on the south side of Columbia Road. And currently zoned R2 Single Family Residential, as are all of the surrounding properties. This is the aerial of the site. You can see the existing house here, and this is the building we will be dealing with tonight with both variance requests. And this is the existing site. So this building that we're talking about was added to the property in approximately 2006. It did have building permits at that time to be constructed as a garage. Sometime in the interim, before the applicant purchased the property in 2014, the upstairs of this building was converted to an apartment. Now, there's, there's two issues we're dealing with tonight. One is the existing setbacks for this building, and one is the presence of that apartment. Per county code, for an ancillary dwelling like this, a second dwelling unit on the property, the lot as a whole should have at least 20,000 square feet of area, and the structure has to be less than 1,800 square feet. Now, based on the square footage we've received and kind of aerial measurements, the structure meets the 1,800 square foot requirement, so it is below that threshold. However, the lot is 19,863 square feet, so it's about 137 square feet short of the 20,000 square feet required. That is less than a 1% reduction in the lot size. That is something that we actually had to get a reference the plat and get a survey done to tell. That is close enough that it's certainly not obvious, driving by the property, that it's below that. So in regards to the 9052, that ancillary dwelling portion of the code, in staff's opinion, this is a small enough difference that it doesn't materially impact the intent of the code. In regards to the building setback, the building, based on kind of aerial and site visits from staff, does appear to be within the side setback. That building should be at least 10 feet off the property line. It does not appear to meet that. Again, it was built with building permits. It is an existing structure. It has been in place since 2006. So the setback variance is basically to allow the existing building to remain in place. That brings it kind of out of being completely non-conforming, which could potentially impact future sale of the property if it remains non-conforming. So approximate setback, again, that looks like it's probably closer to seven and a half feet than 10 feet. We do have conditions proposed that the reduced setback would only apply to this existing building, and if for any reason it had to be reconstructed, if a tree falls on it or something along those lines, they would have to meet the 10-foot setback at that point.
That involve having to repair more than 50% of the structure? Is that where that would kick in?
It could, potentially.
50% of the value? I mean, how would, how would we decide whether or not?
Currently, that condition is not worded with a percentage like that. It certainly could be. We basically just said if it's a new building construction. The other concern that this has brought up is with privacy for the adjacent homeowner. So we do have a proposed condition requiring an additional wall on the landing to kind of block the view from that small porch landing area into the adjacent backyard. So there is, is that condition proposed? Due to the location of this, most likely that wall is going to have to be fire-rated to meet building code requirements. So in regards to kind of what happens if these variances are approved versus disapproved? So if the setback variance is approved, the building can stay where it is. It is no longer non-conforming, so if, you know, bank were to check for future sale of the property, that it was compliant with zoning, that variance would make it compliant, would allow the sale to happen. If that variance for the setback is disapproved, the building still doesn't have to move. It can stay there. It just retains non-conforming status, and if, again, a bank checks its sale of the property, at that point, they would have to get a variance for the same thing, for the setback for that existing building. In regards to the ancillary dwelling portion, if that is approved, it does allow her to keep the full apartment there on that second story. If it is disapproved, it basically requires her to remove the kitchen from it. For a dwelling unit, it has to have basically sleeping area, bathroom, and a kitchen. So if it loses one of those elements, it's no longer a dwelling unit. The kitchen would be the major one and kind of the logical one to remove to meet that requirement, to not be a dwelling unit anymore. That doesn't prohibit any other use of that second floor. It just requires it to not be a full dwelling unit anymore. So with that being said, staff is recommending approval with the following conditions for the two variance requests. Reducing the side setback for the existing detached garage building only, with any new buildings on the property, including reconstruction or replacement of the detached garage, meeting the required setbacks for the R2 zoning district. Limiting the size of the ancillary dwelling to 1,700 square feet, that's approximately the size of the existing building. And requiring the enclosure of that side of the landing facing the adjacent property. Construction to comply with all building and fire code requirements and the architectural standards of the neighborhood, and to be complete within 90 days of approval by the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? Ms. Montgomery? Mr. Scarborough, could I pick your brain for just a minute, please, sir? I need to clear the mud here. So question becomes between an ancillary structure and I guess just a garage or a secondary structure on the piece of property. If it remains an ancillary structure, what's incumbent upon the property owner to provide you when it comes to inspections?
Right, code enforcement has, I, and several by inspectors have been out on site. We have provided the homeowner with a list of items that need to be addressed for that to maintain an ancillary dwelling.
And an ancillary dwelling basically means an apartment.
An apartment, correct. Been on site, like I said, knowing that we have, county was knowledgeable of the watch going in, forge up top. It, like I said, whatever. Like I said, whatever point, that apartment was in place. We knew certain triggers there, being an ancillary dwelling.
And normally somebody would come to you and get building permits, submit plans, have to have inspections and?
That is great. That way we would be modified, so we require the required information, plans, permits issued and take it place. Being that none of that had taken place and the county didn't have knowledge of coming in apartment, we felt the need to identify what those deficiencies were. Having provided the, with the homeowner with those items, they had a contractor on site with us as well the day we walked through it. They are well aware.
How significant of a list was that?
It was quite a significant list of things that needed to be. Like I said, we were looking at span separation between floor type depending on those continued use below, whether it's being used as a garage, the fire separation between dwelling and the garage. A lot of factors trigger additional, additional items. It is a significant list. If they were to like to maintain or utilize the space as an ancillary dwelling. If it is not, if they remove one of those items to make it a place for a man cave, so to speak, dwelling just a man cave. Like you prefer.
She shed is the appropriate.
Then they can remove that item. It's not, there's cost associated with that, but nowhere near significant.
That item would be the ability to cook, so that'd be a permanent range stove, oven.
Like I said, is cost associated with that, but not as significant as maintaining ancillary dwelling.
So if it's an ancillary dwelling, there's a big fix-it list.
Right, there is a.
If they want to just maintain it as a garage with a storage area, they have to remove the stove and they're done with you.
Right, yeah. We need to go out and ensure, make sure everything has been removed.
Right. All right. Thanks, sir. Gentlemen, do you all have any questions? Mr. Scarborough? Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Sure.
So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak in favor of this.
Would you mind giving us your name and home address for the record?
I'm sorry. My name is Heather McGinnis. My home address is 4221 Green Ivy Lane, Martinez Augusta 30907. But thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak in favor of this variance. I wanted to express my gratitude to the code enforcement office, especially Ms. Rhodes and Mr. Scarborough and the Planning Division for helping me out and working with me throughout this nightmare of a situation that has become, like, come to light through no fault of my own. The substance of my request has already been laid out for you, so I will not recapitulate all those items right now. However, I do wish to make the following statement and request. Respectfully, I ask that this variance be approved without the third listed condition. That condition would require me to enclose the landing of the external stairs and to complete the construction within 90 days. That condition is unnecessary and not justified by the intent of the zoning rules that are at issue because, number one. The privacy issue is that if someone is standing at the landing of the stairs, they could see into my neighbor's home. However, that is true of any home that has windows within a person's line of sight. This fact has no connection to this being an ancillary dwelling versus a non-ancillary dwelling and does not make it a meaningful difference if there is a nine and a half foot setback or a 19-foot setback. As homeowners living in a neighborhood, we all accept that individuals may be able to see into our houses at various lines of sight. This is something that can be easily remedied by any homeowner by utilizing blinds or curtains or on their windows. This distance between the landing and my neighbor's home is significant, many multiples of the 10-foot setback. Number two, my neighbors purchased their house with full knowledge of the open and obvious garage apartment, which, because I didn't know it wasn't within code, my mother was openly and conspicuously living in. I purchased this home as having a mother-in-law suite, as it was listed in Zillow, precisely so that she could live there. At no point in time before the spring of 2022 have my neighbors ever registered any complaint or concern about privacy. Number three, condition number three also places an unreasonable financial burden on me to take the extraordinary step of constructing a fire-rated enclosure in a second-story landing for the purpose or anywhere, for the purpose of increasing a neighbor's privacy. There are equally viable and considerably less expensive remedies in the form of blinds, curtains, or privacy film. Again, this is something all homeowners must make decisions about when choosing to live in a neighborhood. Finally, my neighbors are in the process of moving. To require me to expand additional, expend additional funds to enclose a second, you know, a landing is not justified in this case, and we don't know what the next neighbor will want. For all these reasons, I respectfully request that the variance be approved without condition number three. As a closing comment, I want to say that this entire process has been very costly and distressing. I did all the right things when I purchased this home, did not cut any corners in terms of inspections, appraisals, or insurance. I was led to believe that I was purchasing a home with a garage apartment, and I reasonably believed that it had been constructed in accordance with all codes and regulations. The estimates for bringing this garage apartment up to code are already extraordinarily high. I'm talking over $20,000. And are going to be impacted by ongoing supply chain issues and labor shortages. The net result of this is that the value of my home, my most valued possession and investment, is not what I thought it would be. Thus, I thank you for your consideration of my zoning variance request today, as it will allow me to begin the process of putting this matter behind me. Thank you.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Ma'am, ma'am, do you intend for somebody to live in this garage apartment now?
No, I do not intend for someone to live there unless I have to, but I do intend, if that is the case, to bring it up to code first. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Actually, an attorney, Wright McLeod's office, and I actually am the legal representation for Spring Lakes. I'm more than happy to give my home address, but I don't know if that's necessary for my legal representation.
It is.
Okay. My home address is 755 Jones Creek Drive, Evans, Georgia 3080. I just wanted to come to the board as well, just to let you know that I did meet with Ms. McGinnis as well about this, more so from the purposes of the Spring Lakes HOA perspective and their legal representation of that. Ms. McGinnis has signed an agreement with us, essentially saying that she is not going to rent that place because that is against the covenants of Spring Lakes. She will also make a formal request for the ACC part of that. Now, obviously, any type of ACC request or anything like that is going to be, she knows and has signed, that is separate from any code enforcement issues or anything that the commission decides tonight. So I just wanted to give that. More than happy to answer any questions as well, but.
Gentlemen, any questions, Mr. Sheik?
You're saying that the HOA is not going to allow her to use that garage apartment?
But, no, no, Commissioner. What we're saying is that she's more than welcome to use that as a garage apartment, obviously, outside of any, you know, approval or disapproval that's happened today or any code enforcement violations. What we're saying is she cannot rent that apartment. She can use it for her own. She can use it for a she shed. She can use it for whatever she would like to do. She cannot rent it based on the HOA.
That was the question I asked. Is she going to be allowed to rent it?
Oh, I apologize.
The HOA.
Apologize. No, she will not be able to rent it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning or variance, excuse me? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Hey, my name is David Dietz. I'm at 4223 Green Ivy Lane. I'm right next door to Heather at 4221 Green Ivy Lane. We share a property line that is next to the ancillary structure. We have owned the home for three years. When we were considering on buying this home, we were told that the structure in question was only a garage with storage on top. We also confirmed this with the county's GIS system, which GIS system should be kind of a tried and true method of understanding what these properties are being used for. On the second day of owning the home, we learned that multiple people were living in the structure above the garage. Even though we were misled about the structure, we tried to remain cordial, even when we felt like our privacy was disregarded. Want to speak with you all today to share a perspective on what the application packet may not show. The stoop and staircase sit approximately five and a half feet from the fence line. Nothing that you guys have approved this evening has a setback that's small. The landing also sits two stories in the air and is centered on the property line. It can oversee my entire property and home. We know this because the previous tenant let us know that she could see the house. I hope it goes without saying that this can be frustrating, especially on repeated occasions. Landing is also used as a patio and creates a scenario where the tenant may watch and comment on activities in our backyard. It eventually became too uncomfortable, so we stopped using the backyard entirely. Had we known that the structure was a living space, we may not have bought our home. The issue was further exacerbated in March 2021, when a fire caused property damage and destroyed the fence. When we pursued their insurance company, they denied any responsibility because the structure was being covered. Therefore, the fence sat in a state of disrepair until I was able to get time this past weekend, when my father and I replaced the fence due to my family's upcoming vacation. It's our opinion that the lack of appropriate setback infringes on our right to privacy and sets a precedent for the neighborhood and county. We also spoke to the previous association manager at the time that this was built. They shared that it was never meant to be a livable space for tenants. It was meant to be a man cave, a music room for occasional use. We suspect that this is why the setback requirement was ignored on construction. Lastly, my wife and I are relocating for work, and therefore will be putting our property on the market soon. We're very anxious about this process, given that the structure and the very public nature of this variance process. We're concerned that there would be tangible economic losses because of these variances. Do not deny that the applicant Heather McGinnis was wronged by the previous homeowner. We do not wish to see her be wronged in the future because she is our neighbor, and despite us speaking at this hearing, we do want the best for her and her family. We're simply asking that you consider our rights to privacy as property owners and this process. We're specifically asking that if you tend to grant these variances, we also consider additional conditions for the property owner that require more screening than was currently proposed. We're aware that there is a new tenant next door as of this past weekend. We ask that you consider adding additional screening to the staircase, use of a privacy wall, or maybe landscaping with rapidly growing trees that can provide increased privacy. While we understand that we are moving relatively soon, we do want to make this a best situation for the potential. We believe these are reasonable requests compared to what most would ask if they were in our situation. We appreciate the staff and the members of the planning commission who took the time to visit our home and listen to our concerns. Please consider any conditions for the property owner that go further to address our right to privacy as property owners.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
How long have you lived in the house?
Well, over three years.
When you noticed that there was a problem, why didn't you all take it upon yourself to go ahead and plant some fast-growing trees there to make sure you had some privacy in your backyard?
We, we didn't think that it was going to be much of an issue. Honestly, we didn't, we weren't sure what we were going to be doing with the backyard at that time. We were considering putting a shed over there in that general area so that maybe we could still use other portions of the backyard.
That big pine tree there, how are you going to put a shed there?
Come again?
You going to cut the pine tree down to put the shed? Hang on.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I honestly, I don't understand. I've dealt with neighbors for 30 years, and if I could see a problem, you know, I took it upon myself to deal with it, and I understand your problem, but sometimes you have to try to fix things yourself.
Right.
And I don't want to sit here and lecture to you, but I mean, that's part of being a neighbor and part of being a homeowner.
Absolutely.
One moment, please.
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
The action taken by the homeowners association, in my mind, regardless of what's voted about the variance, has satisfied the biggest part of your problem in that they're not going to land about to live in it, correct?
Yeah, that, so.
That's the biggest part of the problem.
Yeah, somebody, really the biggest, the biggest issue that we've had is somebody necessarily sitting out there.
Right. So if that's about what the attorney said, that problem's been solved for the homeowners association. So regardless of what this board votes on the setback, it seems to me the biggest part of the problem has been solved with what the HOA did. Am I correct?
I, I could have definitely misunderstood. I took the HOA.
It can be used, but nobody can permanently live there.
Okay.
It cannot be leased or rented.
That's my point.
Okay.
Sir, is that what the document says? That this cannot be leased or rented? Okay. Your honor. Right. They can use that as a, as a bedroom so somebody in the family could live there, but they can't have a, a commercial enterprise going and lease the property. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, and, and that's, I think that's kind of what I was getting at, is it mostly solves the problem, but somebody can still live there.
You're just somebody.
So if they're related, if they're part of the family, they can live there. It just can't be an outside tenant renting that space.
Is that what he was saying?
Yes.
Kid could get a divorce and need somewhere to live and move back in and live. And it, allow, charge them rent per the HOA.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Keep it short, please. You've already, we've already given you one bite at the apple here.
Just wanted to state it for the record that the current tenants actually removed. And after they stated that they realized that someone lived there.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You had something you wanted to add? All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and give us your name and home address. And I think we'll end this with you and close the public hearing. Please give us your name and home address.
I'm Beth Fritz. To Spring Lakes. And, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but I actually have probably more questions. I am against this. And, but I have questions. For instance, how this was, I'll do this right about Heather here, but how was this permitted at 2006? And Jean, I think you were on the HOA.
And I think this is probably a conversation for the board meeting after this, honestly.
But getting to this was approved since then.
As a garage.
Yes. But my thing, because I know the Epps, I know Lee and Chris, who were the owners, and that Chris was the president of our association at the time. And my question is, so if it's approved that no one, even if a sister or a child were to live there, but you're asking them to remove the appliances. Who's to say they don't bring the appliances back in during the night? Or who's to say that it is rented? How do you check up on that?
How do we know we're not, you're not running poker games in your house? I mean, we can't be everywhere all the time. That's where we have to rely on neighbors to, to, to let us know what's going on.
But if you're going to approve this and allow that.
I can answer part of that. A lot of this that you people are bringing tonight has to do with the HOA and not to do with us. We're sitting here listening to something that is, a lot of it shouldn't even be before us.
This honestly should have been handled in the closing and caught by, by Ms. McGinnis's closing attorney, and you had a real estate agent that lied to you. And, and you wouldn't believe how often we hear that. So it's either your property line goes back to here, or gee, nobody's ever going to build on this green space behind you, of course, until somebody else buys it. So we, we, you would not believe how often we hear complaints about real estate agents that, that just want to get you to yes.
And if you thought somebody was renting it out of order, then it would go to the HOA, not to us.
And then one last thing, just for what you said to David, I found offensive. I just want to say that he did do, I thought went beyond, over and beyond that repaired that fence that she was responsible for. So for her to come up and say that, you know, why didn't he plant trees? Well, my goodness, came out of his pocket to fix it.
No, ma'am. We're, we're done. We're going to close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone. And, and I honestly believe we might want to take these, these things separately and separate one into that, to one motion in the ancillary dwelling and one motion for the list of lot and structure requirements. Would, would that be acceptable to do that?
Fair. And, and I guess just a reminder, not for as much the planning commission, but for the public, these will be recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, so this won't be final action regardless. But yes, you can split them out.
And Commissioner Skinner is expecting a phone call as soon as this meeting is over from his appointee.
Chairman, make a motion.
Okay. Let's make them one at a time and vote on them individually.
Make one motion and vote, and then we'll do the second one.
First motion, motion to approve 9052. Green Ivy Lane.
Okay. Are there any conditions that?
No, not with. Uh, no, not with the disapproval. That would remove, they'd have to remove one portion of the upstairs.
Correct, so if, if the disapproval stands at the, the board of commissioners, that would automatically require them to basically remove the kitchen from the unit.
Okay, all right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of disapproval on the ninety dash fifty-two for ancillary dwelling? Raise your right hand. All opposed? Abstain?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Motion passes three with one abstention. All right, sir, you want to have a second motion?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a second motion, TA twenty-two dash oh four dash one for approval of ninety dash fifty-three, the list of lot structures, striking out the second of the three, ancillary dwelling larger than the second. Don't think it fits the conditions at this point. Am I correct?
Yes.
So, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so, so we have a discussion now. So the seventeen hundred square feet is the footprint itself, not both stories?
That is total square footage, so that does include both stories.
Okay.
Because for, per ancillary dwelling code, it is square footage under roof.
Is the porch on the back included in the square footage?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Which was unpermitted, as I recall.
I can't comment on that.
All right, um, you know, the question of the fires come up. Mr. Scarborough, was it ever determined by anybody if that was a mechanical issue with the air conditioning, or if, if somebody may have dropped a cigarette? It was a mechanical issue. Okay, all right. All right, gentlemen, any other discussion? Okay, so, uh, we need to vote either for or against. Gentlemen, all in favor of approving the ninety dash fifty-three, I've gotten confused here.
Variance.
The variance, I'm sorry. Raise your right hand. All opposed? Any abstaining? All right, the motion passes three zero. We do have a text amendment here, file TA two two zero four zero one, text amendment, chapter six for alcoholic beverages and chapter ninety in zoning. Mr. Sterling, we get to hear from you tonight.
Yes, sir. This is a couple of different proposed amendments requested by the board of commissioners to take a look at particularly chapter six alcoholic beverages, and as it relates to the retail sales of packaged, I have to read it because it's confusing a multiple, multiple times, so we'll call it, well, like it is, type of retail establishment for the retail sale of distilled spirits for off-premise consumption. We will now call it packaged liquor stores. That's largely what we're talking about here tonight. So what that means is, is that the commission wanted us to take a look at and offer some suggestions as to how to, how better to address a recent run on packaged liquor stores here in Columbia County. And particularly, they wanted us to look at the distance separation between those existing packaged liquor stores and any proposed that may be coming forward. Update and clarify the distance requirements from the schools, churches, county playgrounds that are currently in the code, and then also as a separate action to create a zoning category, basically make this a conditional use at, in the zoning chapter, in chapter ninety, as it relates to the packaged liquor stores, and then provide some code language to address the potential situation where we might have multiple applications in a close proximity. So as we look at this, I'll break it out into two different categories and two, and corresponding amendments, and that's chapter six. We made some recommendations for amendments to the application procedure in six forty-eight that would provide the, again, the multiple applications that would be within a one-mile distance of each other. So we had one not too long ago this year, where we had three separate applications all on opposite corners of one intersection. And under the proposed amendments, that situation would not be able to permit all three of them. We wouldn't have, under the current language, but under the new language, we would not be able to either. What the multiple applications language in the proposed amendments would entail is we would take the first complete application that is in to permitting office and run that all the way through the process. If they are approved, then they would be the only ones that would then create that boundary. They complete their process and are open operating, then the other two would no longer be able to be heard and would, would go away. So that's part of the reason that we put that language in there. One of the other issues that was requested was to address the distance requirements. Currently, there is a one-hundred-yard requirement for churches. So what we did was we converted yards to feet, so now everything will instead of say yards, it will now say feet. So as it relates to chapter six, or excuse me, yeah, chapter six, we will now convert those to feet, and that will now be two hundred feet for church buildings and six hundred feet for school buildings, county parks and playgrounds, or alcoholic treatment facilities. And the reason we're doing, or leaving them as is, is because that language now relates to all other alcohol beverage licenses. Does not include the packaged liquor stores, which we will address in chapter ninety. And then we removed some language, we clarified the language that the director that they're referring to in chapter six is the director of development services or his designee. And then finally, in section one oh six, we refer to, we remove the retail distilled spirits for off-premise consumption. We removed the sentence that talks about the drive-through lang, drive-through window that was currently in the ordinance. We're moving that to actually chapter ninety, so clarifying some language there. And of course, staff will recommend approval on that. And then in chapter ninety, like I mentioned previously, we are adding this particular use, the retail sale of distilled spirits for off-premise, off-premise consumption, packaged liquor stores as a conditional use in C two and C three. That is our recommendation. PUD, you could conceivably put that in typically. Those you'll have, you know, either a list of uses that would be approved at the time of zoning, or typically what has happened is we'll throw in like CC or C one or C two as the commercial uses permitted. So they'd still have to get a conditional use under that, but if they specifically identify that, they could conceivably get that approved at the time of zoning approval for the PUD. But primarily, it's going to be C two and C three where it would be a conditional use. And again, we added the separation requirement there, and a number of conversations with the board of commissioners and administration, the number that was arrived at was one-mile separation between all existing and any proposed packaged liquor stores. Not include beer and wine, not include any of the other restaurants and any of that sorts, just the packaged liquor stores. So that's one thing. Then we updated and clarified the distance requirements for the churches, schools, county playgrounds, and the alcohol treatment facilities, and that is a thousand feet for those. And that's in chapter, in ninety as well, so that would be a new requirement. We've converted that again from the yards, as I mentioned previously, the one-mile separation is a new requirement between existing and proposed facilities. And then how we determine the calculation, we did it straight line from the main entrance of the door of the retail package store to either the church, school, playground, alcohol treatment. We added that language in chapter ninety as part of the conditions of the conditional use, so those juice provisions that go with them. We added the drive-through window. Basically, we carried over a number of those provisions from chapter six and added those in here into one ninety-one forty-seven. Again, talked about the, brought the language over that the existing retail sales of the distilled spirits for off-premise consumption would, that are in effect at the time of adoption of this ordinance, should it be passed by the board of commissioners, would remain valid, and any renewals of those locations would also be allowed to continue until such time as they were terminated by their own religion. That slide? Um, map? We don't. Okay.
That was a good graphic.
Yeah, there was a, there was a map. Currently, as of, well, as of today, we have seventeen packaged liquor stores in the county that are operating or are under construction and to be complete. Within that, we have a majority of those that are within a one-mile ring of at least one other store, if not multiple stores in some instances. So those in completion of this ordinance, if it is adopted by the board of commissioners, those would remain valid unless they were unable to meet the requirements for those that, those couple that are under construction currently and were not unable somehow to get a, an extension from the board of commissioners.
Thing that keeps somebody from making a run and trying to, to, to buy up is they have to begin construction within a hundred and eighty days of their approval.
They do. Currently, they have a hundred and eighty-day requirement from the board of commissioners' approval to open and be operational. So whether that is either new construction or tenant outfitting of an existing structure, yes, they would have that requirement. Part of the, the thought process, I believe, from the board of commissioners and administration and talking with the rest of staff, was that keeping it limit, or limiting it to C two and C three keeps it more in our urbanized areas of the county, doesn't allow retail sales anywhere, so your CCs, your C ones, those areas would include some of our crossroads. We do have some zoning where it may or may not be appropriate at this time. That doesn't mean that in the future, those properties could be considered for rezoning to a C two or C three density, but at this time, we limited it to C two, C three, just to kind of start the ball rolling, and we'll reevaluate as we need to.
Okay, thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, I guess we need a motion to, to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone for this?
It's public hearing, so you have to have...
Okay, all right, I apologize. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to come up and give us some liquor talk? Dana, I can't believe you're not coming up. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve a text amendment for ordinance.
Right. Pass three.
Your second?
Second.
Question? Samples here tonight, all in favor? Most to approve, passes four zero. All right, do we have any staff or commissioner comments? I appreciate y'all's work. We had a long agenda tonight. Again, it, I guess, our missing the first meeting of the month helped contribute to that just a little bit. Didn't? This would have happened regardless of Masters Week?
Yeah, that's totally separate.
All right, awesome. Do we have any public comments? All right, seeing none, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
No motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to adjourn, seven twenty-two. Next meeting is Thursday, May fifth, twenty twenty-two, at six PM.
I've been closer.